...for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Stephen? This evening, we're going to begin the evening with a moment of silence. Many of you in the village may know, many of you may not know, of the passing of our zoning board chairman, Mark Nicholson, almost two weeks ago now. But I'd like to take a moment of silence in memory of Mark. If you'll join me, please. Thank you very much. And at this time, we will move on to our public comment portion of the evening. If there is anyone here that would like to address the board, I would open up the public comment portion. Apparently, there is no one. So we will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move now to a presentation from AYS to present an IT proposal to the board. Would you like to go to them?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah?
All right. Can you hear me? There we go. So I'm guessing that everybody's seen the presentation in full. And obviously, it's a pretty large presentation. So I'd like to probably just try to open it up for questions, to see if anybody has anything particularly they'd like to point on. I can briefly go over this if you'd like. However you want me to run this, I'm happy to do so.
So you want to have any questions? That didn't we serve there?
Okay. So basically, we did an audit of what you guys have here at the village hall. We looked at the entire building. And in the first section of the roadmap, you'll actually see what I found. And actually, overall, you're in a pretty decent position. You know, there's a lot of green here that we're going to keep. You have a decent firewall in place. I don't have to get too specific on all the IT sides, because I don't want to blindside people with a bunch of overhead information. But the main priority is firewall, endpoint security, and then backup. As for the firewall, you have a current gen firewall that's in place. It's got services. We know when it's going to expire, so we can take that over on renewing it. The next thing down there would be antivirus, which needs a little bit of help. That's about one of the things that we found that it needs a centrally managed version of the antivirus, so we can respond to threats in an active time, get notifications if something were to happen, and able to do remediation from any place on the planet, not just have to come here and remediate a computer. The actual network is actually in pretty good shape. The rack back there and all the equipment in there are up to snuff. They're in warranty. They have services. So, you know, again, we don't really come in and go, you know, this company is doing things wrong. I like to say how it is. LMT is doing things right for a lot of things. So they're keeping you at least up to date, for the most part. Where they start falling behind is, like, the power backup, the data backup, the PCs being kind of unorganized and unupdated and not being able to go to the latest version of Windows, which that's a problem, because the version of Windows that you guys are stuck on right now is end of life in October. So we have to come up with a plan for that beforehand. Wireless is in good shape. And then, so the phone system is the other thing that we look at, too. I know you guys are kind of in a limbo, transition mode from the current phone system over to Spectrum. I don't know if that has evolved at all since we last spoke, but apparently not. And again, we're still willing to help with that. We did offer a solution for that as well. I think that we're there kind of, you guys are kind of in a place of, you know, let's see how this Spectrum thing pans out. But if they drop the ball, I'm happy to pick it up. And then the data backup, that's probably the most important thing. As you can get through a firewall, and you can get through the endpoint protection, your last resort is the backup. And right now, it's in not a great shape. There's a physical interaction that's happening by the staff that has to happen, according to LMT, where they have to take the hard drives and take them off-site. That's ridiculous. It needs to be automated. It needs to be vetted, and it needs to be validated every backup, so we know that we can restore from it. And if the place burns down, we know we still have a copy of it. And no one person should be responsible for that. It should be in a data center locked behind biometrics, which is what we're offering. So that's one of the things we want to fix. And then the conference room, you know, this setup, actually, this is the first time I've got to watch her do it. And it's, yeah, it's convoluted. Absolutely. There is not an easy way to describe what she has to go through to get this to work. She just actually told me that she checked for firmware updates on these two cameras two hours ago. And then five minutes before we started here, they came out with a firmware update that stopped her from doing this on time. So all by her, not her own fault, this thing was delayed just because of a minor technical issue. We worked with another company, a sister company called Radiomix. I had him look at this room, and he came up with a pretty decent solution, how we're going to kind of fix all this. So that's another thing that we want to really tackle, is the fluidity of this. Yes. Yeah. And the wiring in here is, and somebody's going to get hurt. That's what I'm worried about. You guys are going to trip back there over all that stuff. So they can take care of that, too. We're going to sort all that out at once, so it's kind of a seamless thing, wireless mic, stuff like that.
I just want everything working right once.
Yeah. Yeah. And I agree with you. I think that's, obviously, that's the most important thing. So the remediation plan, that kind of is what we go into next. And this is where you kind of see the nuts and bolts of the price, where the estimates come in. So then I'd like to open up to questions, if you want to ask any questions about what the, you know, what the plan is on, like, the project side of things. Because our plan right now is to replace the antivirus. It's to get the extended list of PCs up to snuff, so we don't hit that October date. It's to fix the backup, and hopefully implement a hosted phone system if this thing falls through with Spectrum. But if not, we'll deal with that. And then the battery backup, we want to fix that, too. And of course, the conference room, who just talked about, but... So there's a couple of things at play there, a couple of quotes that we have estimates for. And those basically just solve those particular projects. And we have them weighed in, like, importance. So you can kind of plan that out and budget it if you need to. And then the last thing is the ongoing maintenance. You know, something that you need to do for complacency. New York State Shield Act requires you to have somebody maintaining your firewall, maintaining your antivirus, maintaining your servers. You have AB Cloud, which is, oh, there's an unknown there. We even kind of outlined that a lot of the licensing that they're using, that LMT is using or providing to you guys, is more of a close-to-chest licensing. We're not going to find out exactly what they're selling you until we kind of take over. But we have the same distribution channels as they do. I went through my distribution channel manager. I found out that more than likely, you're using a very specific set of licensing. I got the cost on that and gave a comparison to what we would charge versus what they would charge. And it's just kind of like, they're, they're bigger. You know what I mean? They're...
Right. We know.
Yeah. So in any case...
Can you explain to them what differences and how you guys came about versus other companies?
Absolutely. So, let's see. I was U.S. Navy for 20 years. I worked on the Blue, Red, and Gold Team, which is like a hacking division of the Navy. It's where we go out and test our own ships, hack our own ships to see what the security's like. The Gold Team is at the top level of that, basically. And I led the Gold Team for 15 years in my deployment. So I have a heavy background in security. I went from that to teaching in California. And then I took up some jobs around here, which, and I learned the very brutal truth, that there's not very many IT companies doing things with integrity or even just compassion for the end user. So, you know, I have a lot of like-minded people. I have a lot of people that were in the military, but two of which are employed by me. I took some people from my older organization that agreed with my views. And we just started a company that put the client first, essentially. That's, that is our goal, is to make sure that we're doing right by the client. All the projects that we push out and use estimates, we make probably 10%, 15%, if, if that. And when you look at the products that we're selling, most of the time, we don't mark hardware up at all. Because it's not worth it for us to nickel-and-dine you and stuff like that. We want the relationship. We want to be here for the long run. All of our clients have stayed with us since the inception of our relationships. We've never lost a client, never will. That's just really how we work, is we strive to keep our clients happy. That's the end goal. So if that's something you're looking for, that's something that we provide with aces on our sleeve. And that goes and starts right at the proactive service agreement, as a matter of fact. We have a agreement that basically says that we're going to do right by you by only charging one specific charge a month that never changes, unless, of course, there's inflation and whatnot. We give you advance notice, plenty of advance notice, that the rates are increasing. However, in our time as a company, that's happened two times. And again, I think I've only increased the prices about 25%. But that's, we lock it in, you never get an extra bill. You call us as many times as you want over the month, through the month. We just don't open up a ticket for you, because we don't want you to be afraid to pick up the phone just because you have a problem. That's the whole point of us, is you have a problem, you're here to run this time. You're not here to run your computer. Your computer doesn't need to run you either. We can help that. So that's the whole point. We just want you to feel comfortable and have the ability to call us without going, "I'm going to get a bill in four days, because I spent four hours on my computer," or whatever the case may be.
You say that now to...
Well, right now, you're getting...
If you've called you 200 times in two days, you're going to regret that.
Yeah, I might. I might regret that. But we do have a system in place. We do have a system in place to where we track everything, right? And in six months, if we say that, listen, we grossly underestimated the amount of hours that it's going to take us to maintain you guys' run, we come and sit back down right here and have a discussion about it. And then we deal with either going up or down in hours. We've had clients go down in hours, plenty of times, just because our goal here is to get them to a proactive state, where you're not calling me.
Right.
I mean, most of my clients don't even call me anymore. I just show up on their monthly visit or their weekly visit, I say hi to everybody, they tell me what they need me to do, I do them, I do the maintenance, and I go on my merry way. And that's how it should work. Shouldn't be calling me every day, because you have a printer problem or a phone problem that should be resolved and moved on. And then the next engineer gets that ticket, they should have the solution already, because I wrote it down in our ticketing system. So everybody shares the same information.
Very good.
Yes.
Any other questions I can field?
They answered a lot of them.
Perfect. Perfect.
How long, how long you been in business?
10 years. 12, actually, but I like 10. It's a nice number. Yep. Yeah. We've always been real, right down, right across from Delco. You guys have been right here this whole time. So it's kind of sad I didn't drop in earlier. But it's, I'm actually really excited to get working and starting here. That's what's going to happen, because I can see the potential. You know, we work with a lot of other municipalities. There's things that you're doing here that are unnecessary, like the blanket costs that she showed you, the comparison between us and them. I just want to say, that's a starting point, a high starting point. By the time that I get to six months, a year down the road, of working this through, I'm going to have things changed around a lot in the way that you're actually working, the way that you're actually spending the money to work with IT, to where we're reducing and eliminating those costs. There really shouldn't be, you have a crazy amount of a zero licensing. It shouldn't happen. Should not be happening. There's no municipality that ever, ever see with the amount of monthly licensing that you have, that have currently. I mean, it's 500% over what it should be. You should have none of it. You should really have none of it. There should be one license you guys have that's 365 for your email, cloud-based stuff.
Yes.
You guys are just hosting your server in the cloud, or hosting this in the cloud, or hosting that in the cloud. It's just, it's too much. It doesn't need to happen. None of it does. Especially for a small municipality like this, it's...
Exactly.
Yeah. It's, it's overkill.
We have better ways to spend our money.
You absolutely do. You absolutely do. So...
And I want to make the front part of it work. I have no idea how the rest of any of the computer stuff works. But if it's not, like, their server's not hosting the cloud, is, are you talking about the server, a local server?
Which you still have here, by the way.
Yeah.
A perfectly good piece of hardware in warranty. They moved you to the cloud for whatever reason. I don't know what the particular reason is of that. But the reason for them was money. That was...
Well, no, they chose that. The board chose.
That may be so, but they chose it off the base of the information that you were, you were given by LMT.
Exactly. Information.
So whether or not they gave you a choice in that information, I don't know. I think they may have just presented, like, this is how you should go, right?
They said in the long run, because we might have to, like, replace servers a lot. So that's what, that's what they...
You know, the thing is, I was talking to Karen about this specific thing. I mean, I think it's relevant, too. A cost comparison between having your own server and hosting it in the cloud might seem like, in the short period, the cloud thing is a better solution. But it really actually is not. On paper, you're paying nearly, what was it, $60,000 for the cloud solution over the better part of 10 years? I think that's what Karen came up with in the math. I'm proposing 15. You know what I mean? Like, it's... Well, they were based off of the numbers that I provided with the licensing that I would have pushed out.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. So like, it's, it's a pretty fair comparison, when we're talking about hosting a server versus a cloud-based server. And to your point, there really wouldn't be any cost going back at this point. I mean, besides the labor and to actually make it happen. So there's just options. You know what I'm saying?
The savings for labor hours, because it's going to be faster, because it's local rather than going out. So now I can't search. If I try to search for something on my computer, it just doesn't do anything. And so I gotta mine it down to a specific folder that I think something's in, and then search, and then it'll pop up some results. But if I try to search my whole...
Computer, it's...
Big folder, it's like, it doesn't want to do anything. And it's, that was a change after going to the...
That's indicative of a cloud-based structure that doesn't have search indexing. Not to get into technical details here, but it's, it's a definite problem of what environment you're in. So... Any other questions I can field?
No, that was very helpful information. Thank you.
All righty.
Explained what was in here.
That's my goal. Perfect.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. We'll move on at this point. We'll come back and visit session a little bit later in the meeting. Next, I would like to move to a resolution to approve the minutes from January 23rd. Do you have them in front of you?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
I'm sorry. Can you hold on for one second?
Aye.
James Scott.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Feel better.
Have a very good night, everybody.
Okay. We're moving next to resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to look them over. I'll review it as well. I did not sign, at least in the... Look at it. Anything?
I just wanted to ask a question, the little things, like the First National Bank of Omaha, January purchases. Can we kind of have a breakdown of what these purchases are, or...
Yeah, they're in the packet.
Oh, they're in?
Uh-huh.
Oh, they're, they're, they're in. Okay, okay.
All right. Jake, I had one, I had one, too. Moose equipment?
Yes, to repair. There was a guy at the last meeting who was fixing the truck in the garage. Oh, all right, because I was just wondering, I never heard that name before. Why do we go outside when we got local vendors that we could... Yeah, that was our normal guy that we brought out. We had codes on the truck, and he needed a computer, and suggested this guy, and he was able to come right out and get it going.
What else did I have? Welch's? 1100 bucks for leaves, or...
Yeah, it was leaf, leaf disposal there. We take the leaves down there, because it's a lot quicker turnaround than going anywhere else. So even though we, it's like five bucks a load, drop off the loads, and I guess whenever that was, we provided by five of them, that's how many loads we towed. Time to turn around time, because it's right here next to the village, it's a lot faster. So that's why we decided let's do there.
That's certainly the first time I brought them there.
Yeah, he helps us out a lot, too, at the museum.
Yeah. No, we, we take them there before, but I think he's getting more. This is the first time he's charged us. Usually, there's a location, but now he's, he's getting a lot more of them. And he's got to work them to do something with them, so.
Town Hall, take them for free?
They, well, they will, but it's all relative, I guess. If they take them for free, and it takes us three times as long to take them over there and drop them off, it becomes less free. You know, since this is half a mile away, it's not, we save it on the labor dollars. We can pick up the leaves faster and see a lot more smiley faces when we're driving by.
Because it's time efficient.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's, we got the opportunity to get them up and get them to the trucks.
Hey, Carl, you're up. We want, we really want a great operation here, Jake. I'm proud of everybody. But I'm wondering, don't you have toolboxes in your garage with tools, now?
Yeah.
So we got wrenches, tape bucket, pliers, saccus, wire stripper, and multi-purpose tool. Where's that at? Lowe's. It's not a lot, but I just wondered.
Yeah. So there's, I mean, we've got a budget for tools. We certainly just don't try to use it, because we have it. But if we need wrenches, the tape, I don't know if that was a tape measure, or if it was, like, sticky, stuff with sticky on one side. Buckets get used for, you know, cleaning the vehicles and salt and different, different things. We have to replace them. And wire stripper, multi-purpose tool, I have to look at that one to see if that, what that one was. I have to, well, I have to go out, look at, look at that and get back.
Jake, go with the plow blades under northern supply.
Those are carbide blades for the plows that'll last...
They're down the bottom?
Yeah. That's like the cutting edge. So now, the carbide one's the last, as long as the plow lasts. So we get those, and you don't have to keep changing them, and they don't wear out.
Any other questions? None, and then a motion to approve it. Bring the motion.
I'll second. Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the live incentive proposal from Empire State Development. Now, you have $1,838,000 for the rehabilitation of certain roadways within the Xerox campus. You have those, this proposal here in front of you. I would note that it does say, if you choose to proceed under the terms of this incentive proposal, acknowledge the decision by signing the incentive proposal, returning by March 7th, 2025. So I'm not sure right now, for the down, if there's be advised, that your project requires smart road review. I'm pleased to see the requirements found here. I was looking for that, and I'm still searching for that, but I don't know whether or not, Jake, you have found that. But I would like to personally review that.
I, I have not. I think this was very similar to the one that we already signed when we originally got it. This is just...
What's wrong?
Yeah, it's up in...
It's updating it, correct?
Different percentage. Yes. It was originally 1.8 million on a $9 million project. Now it's 1.8 on a 5.4, or 5.8, rather.
Yeah.
That's the total estimated cost. So that was, there was this increase in the percentage.
Have you got any thoughts on it, Jake?
The smart growth, I think that's more of what the regular, any state fund seems to have, the smart growth review stuff. And there's just with the, part of the, you know, C for the, Shinjo and NIBA, and then there's the smart growth. We did that on North Avenue, I recall, on the North Avenue Connector project. So I think it's a normal item, click on here, because it's just a marker. So I'm trying to find out what they're clicking on. So by the electronic link, click there and see if those reports are. But that'd be part of the, I think, when you're going to, you know, bring the environmental review stuff.
Okay, okay.
You would believe that there is not something that would prohibit the signing of this...
No.
This could be fulfilled.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I would, I'd like...
Prior?
I haven't heard.
Prior or after the fact?
Yeah, it would be prior, just before you're spending it. But, you know, this is obviously something that Matt was spearheading. Now, we've already got the agreement and signed the original one. This is modifying that to frankly make it better terms for us. And I would assume that it had the same, the initial incentive proposal, I would assume had the same terms and requirements set up. This is, yeah, through the ESD one. The smart growth and secrets already been completed.
And I would, if... God, do you have any questions, David?
All right. I don't have any questions. This is a grant that the village got, I don't know, three, four years ago.
Right. But it's a reline thing, I just want to...
Well, I understand, yeah, but it...
Nicely defined.
To me, it's...
It's a better revision.
Yes.
You're not going to want to pull the plug now, are you?
No.
So whatever the state shows in front of you, you basically got to sign, right?
It's not like, it's not like you can go back to them and renegotiate anything that's...
From my March 10th, so I'm not crushed the theme, but...
So there's, you know, there's certain things that I don't think has changed.
Okay.
The village has to pay a 1% commitment fee.
Right.
One, which is 18,380 dollars.
Yeah.
Two, after ESD director's approval, at the time the grant disbursement agreement is like...
Then I just would ask, Jake, that we check out the smart growth review.
Okay.
Uh, what do we play, R and Nets? So if we have time, we'll...
This, this, I don't know, this 28th of 2020, it's on, it says the same paragraph, the environmental historic smart growth review was in the last, um, last one that we signed.
Okay.
The same project.
All right, then I would ask for a motion to authorize myself to sign this agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on. Next we have a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of overriding the tax cap on 25, 26 physical year. Uh, and this is to be held as invented and included in the LMT 27, but loving to give this, the resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to set a public hearing to consider a local law to allow the override of the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, section 3C, if determined necessary and or appropriate. A public hearing shall be scheduled and conducted at a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The Village of Webster to be held at the Village Board Meeting Room 29 South Avenue in the Village of Webster on Thursday, February 27th at 7:05 to consider a proposed local law entitled, quote, "A Local Law to Allow the Override of the Tax Levying Limit Established in General Municipal Law, Section 3C, If Determined Necessary and/or Appropriate," unquote. Such local law will be designated as proposed, a local law number one of 2025 and shall be entitled, as I just read, a local law to allow the override of the tax levying limit established in general municipal law, section 3C, if determined necessary and or appropriate, a copy of which will be available at the offices of the Village Plur's 28 West Main Street, West New York. This will be published once on or before 22nd day of February 2025 in the Webster Go Official Paper of the Village. So I'm asking for a vote to establish this public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I do want to assure or at least make note that this signing of the local law, this establishing of the local law in no way currently, um, says that we're going to inhibit the tax cap. It's just that in some particular tie in the future, if something that occurs, whether it's a mistake on our part or whatever, it does allow us to be able to do that. And there is a safeguard and it must be signed and established from year to year.
That makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense.
Uh, next, what I would like to do at this particular time, uh, there are five, section five, six, and seven of our meeting tonight, what I would like to lump them together and what I would like to do is to make appointments for the zoning board of appeals. And this is in response to the passing of Mark Nicholson. I would like to, and I have had conversation with each one of these, I would like to appoint Mike O'Connor as chairman of the zoning board of appeals to fill the unexpired term of Mark Nicholson ending on July 6th of 2025. I would like to appoint Peter Adams, who is an alternate, as a member of the zoning board of appeals to fill the, uh, the unexpired term of Mark Nicholson ending on July 6th, 2025. And then I would like to appoint Josh Durso as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals for a term ending on February 13th, 2034.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, wait, do it by separate motions.
Do it by separate motion.
Yeah, don't, don't...
Yes, sir.
They're on the agenda as separate resolutions. Well, it's easier to keep track and see if you can look them up.
I would like to make the motion to appoint Mike O'Connor as chairman of the zoning board of appeals to fill the unexpired term of Mark Nicholson ending on July 6th, 2025.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Peter Adams as a member of the zoning board of appeals to fill the unexpired term of Mark Nicholson ending on July 6th, 2025.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I would like to make the motion to appoint Josh Durso as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals for a term ending on February 13th, 2030.
I definitely make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That will give us a full board next week. Okay, other pending business. Uh, I would start with number two. LMT is increasing its price soon and we had heard a proposal from AYS this evening. You had opportunity to read what they have presented, presented to us. I think the cost savings to the village is significant. I think that the proximity to Village Hall is significant.
Very.
In case of any needs. And personally, I would like to make the recommendation that we accept the proposal of AYS. I would make a motion to accept the proposal of AYS.
I'll second.
Mayor Byers?
So by way, just a clarification.
Yes.
Someone's got to sign the agreement, so is your motion to authorize the mayor to sign it, the clerk, who's, who's signing?
I think the mayor should sign it.
Well, they, all right, then just clarify.
Clarify.
Clarify the resolution to authorize the mayor to sign, because there's like three different agreements. There's a firewall control service agreement, which I've looked at all of them and they're fine and whoever they own.
And I will make, didn't he, didn't he, he did only thing that confused me a little bit is he talked about the cloud, the cloud versus the server, right? And I'll tell you, the trend is the opposite of what he said.
We know that, yeah.
It goes to our cloud and it is because of cost and many other things. So that was a little confusing to you.
Yeah, I...
Because it is the opposite of everywhere else.
I don't understand the cloud, but...
No, I don't like to... No.
Well, we are, we have to just figure that out one day. But I think part of it has to be on the, it might be a cloud and then some of it might be on a server, because that's how we do have it now. Some of the programs are still here because they didn't, they couldn't go to the cloud.
Well, yeah, there's, to do a hybrid approach.
I don't think he's changing anything.
No.
Well...
You're still, you're still at the, the village is still paying for that license for Microsoft 365, which is basically the cloud.
Yeah.
And that's what you continue.
Well, he said, I'm not sure whether or not, because you have a perfectly good server, why we're not using that and why it was moved to the cloud, he did say that, just so you know.
I, I heard him say that, but...
Yes, it's true.
When, I don't know, when, when did the village buy that server? Was it before you switched to LYS or the current LMT?
Yeah, no, no, during LMT, I believe.
Well, that doesn't make any sense then. I don't understand why LMT had to buy a server.
Yeah, if they're everything.
If everything was in the cloud.
Yeah.
So, so the, we have a, I apologize, the, the server, I believe, was purchased before, but they don't usually last that long, so...
Well, if it was purchased before, then that makes sense because you already had it, so what are you going to do?
But so our accounting software and our sewer software are, and one other, I believe, are also, are currently housed here because they were very slow to go from the cloud back to here to, um, and so those are still here. So we, and they couldn't be moved to the cloud because when we did, it was really slow. So we're not sure if that might change, I'm not sure, but he doesn't, we're, at this point, we're not changing, we're leaving it how it is because we've already paid for office 365. But I, I could tell when we met with him, when Daryl, myself, and Karen met with him, he did want to move to all server and it wasn't something that I was, it had been the opposite of what I had heard, but...
Somebody's going to find out. And that message that drew this tonight.
Well, it's staying, it's staying as it is because we've already paid for office 365 for the year.
That's a lot to...
Yeah, so we won't need to make any changes, that's more future planning, but it, it sounds like he wants us to do that in the future, but that's still up to you, to you as a board.
If, if signing these agreements does not obligate you to go off the cloud or...
No.
Because they didn't, he never proposed that.
No.
He was more or less just questioning why he went to the cloud in the first place if he had this perfectly fine server sitting somewhere.
Yep.
But, so that, that can be a discussion with him down the road somewhere and, but there's, the, the two agreements are this proactive, proactive service agreement and a firewall control service agreement. So you authorize the mayor to sign those on behalf of the village would be the resolution. So who, who made the original motion? Is it Daryl?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you so amend your motion as, like I just said, this is too, too aggressive?
I do.
Okay, so that's the...
Thank you, okay.
And my motion is amended to number two of these, one being the firewall control agreement.
And the first one was a proactive service agreement.
Yes.
Proactive service agreement, correct.
And just one other thing, and you've dovetailed these, so LM, you paid for LMT through the end of what month?
Well, we weren't sure when you guys were going to move forward with it, but yeah, there will be overlap.
Right, but it should be just like a one-month overlap.
And what he was referencing was alluding to is he's hoping, he's hopeful that he'll be, they'll turn over things by a lot of time and matter, but we never know and, and he won't know really until they get the passwords and everything, so...
But just remember, if you have to give LMT 30 days notice or whatever it is, just timely give them notice once these agreements are signed with a way, so you're not paying
Again.
Another month behind, you know?
And I do need the ones 30 days. I'll do that as soon as possible if this is something... So, sorry, Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Motion passes.
All right, last is, um, agreement to sign a deed and easement, agreement with Pride Mark Homes. This warranty deed, looks like it, uh, is dated here, the fourth day of November 2024. But talks about that, um, all the tract or parcel of land situated in the Village of Webster County, Monroe, State of New York, being the highways or streets shown on Greenbrier Crossing subdivision, section two, as shown on a map on the file of the Monroe County Clerk's Office, in Libra 365 of Maps, pages 53 and 54, designated Cedarway Circle, as more particularly described on Schedule A, attached here to and made a part of your, together with all sanitary and storing sewer lines and proven, uh, purtenances, whatever.
Yes.
Line within said highway. The above described premises are dedicated, released, and conveyed to the village from Webster for highway purposes and other public purposes relating thereto and for public services and uses, including the way to construct, maintain underground conduits for water, gas, sewer, electric, and where necessary lines or wires for public use. This is a warranty deed and I believe that we're looking for a motion to accept.
Correct. We would accept the deed and then there's one form that goes along with the deed is TP 217 or 584? For both of them? There's two other forms that the mayor, some maybe gets the village has to sign that goes along with the deed.
What, what are the numbers on there? Just so...
RP, the 5217 Real Property Transfer Report and the other one's a 584, it's a real estate protector during...
Okay, yeah.
Actually, we need one of these ones. Here.
Okay.
And it, it, it doesn't, you know? This one, this one you need. That, the other one you don't need to go on.
I just think he'd find her footage for you, sorry. I think he saved it.
Well, I'd ask for a motion to allow the mayor to sign this warranty deed.
The resolution would be to accept the deed on behalf of the village.
The deed on behalf of the village?
That's all you need for the deed. Because you don't sign...
There's nothing to sign.
There's nothing to sign on the deed with respect to the village. There's nothing to sign on the deed with respect to the village.
Except the grant fee?
No, but deeds are, deeds are only, it's the grant or the person conveying the property signs the deed.
So the last page I'm here is.
No, you're looking at the utility easement agreement.
That's one.
I think you're looking at the utility easement agreement. Stapled together. The deed's only two pages and then, and that, and with the Schedule A, and then it's the utility easement agreement.
Schedule A?
Yeah.
No, it's free after.
If you want to initial, just initial.
Let them initial.
Deal agreement.
Right, that's, right, because it's an agreement, the village signs that. The deed was. Right, they already did it. There's only one place to sign the deed. So, so it'd be two separate motions, the resolutions. The first would be simply to accept the deed to be recorded. Right. And then, then, then you'll have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the utility easement. And that's, that's for the streetlights and sanitary sewer to the extent that some of them aren't actually within the road right away. So Jake, get them to the.
I'll make that motion to accept the deed.
Yes.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then next, I'd ask for a motion to have the mayor sign the utility easement agreement.
Correct. And if you read, read this, it refers to the sanitary sewer mains, the stormwater management system, and the streetlights. Those are the, those are the utilities that this applies. It's not gas and electric. Those easements are to our genie, not to the village, to the village. It's an electric, yes.
And in the interest of saving paper, we have exhibit A, that's just descriptions of all the little parcels and the easement areas. But we just didn't, I think they're in the email, but they're not. We didn't print out forty two pages of those.
That is in that one. Oh, I think it's in that one. It was a very long document, so it was trying to.
Isn't that this?
There's exhibit A here. So that's, that's the road, so it's for the warrant deed.
That's, goes with the deed.
Okay.
If you go to the very last page, it says exhibit A, then there's nothing behind it.
Yep, that's what you just showed us.
That's what Jake's talking about. He's got forty two pages because again, there, there are some spots within the, where, where the sewers and the stormwater system and the streetlights aren't exactly right within the road right away.
About that.
Yeah, I think first, all the transformers behind the houses, they're in between and behind, and the fuses for the, maybe the streetlights are down in the handle right near the transformer. So we need access to get back there to change the fuse if we have to. So that's one of the easement areas is a, or a couple of them.
This is for section two, correct, of the subdivision? And yet still approved to be. Is it asked for a motion to approve the mayor signing this utility easement agreement?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That comes into consideration through the summer, ten thousand dollars. Okay, let's move it on. I would imagine that, Don, anything you wanted to say in terms of the journey? To may have already done.
Pardon me? No, I, Jake was talking about maintenance bands, but I, I don't have anything.
You've already done. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, okay, we'll move to the clerk.
I just wanted to let you all know that Danielle sent out the budget and the sewer rate study tonight right at seven, so that you had it when you got home. I don't have copies of the, yes, I, I do have copies of the budget here for you that I'll pass out before you leave. The sewer rate study was, was a lot of pages in color. So they're bringing some Tuesday for the budget workshop. So we did email it out if you really want me to, but I can, but I know we're trying to keep their.
No, we're going to have it for the Tuesday evening.
Yeah, they were going to bring, C P will be here and they will bring copies with them.
All right.
Okay. Jake?
Anything exciting, Jake?
No, it was, well, if you're kind of told on me there. The, it was the, the easements and the deeds for that. It's winter time. We, there's been a lot of discussion about salt. We were maintaining, we were getting a little, little time to time, but we were maintaining on the salt. I've got a call from OGS saying that we're eligible for emergency delivery. And we were in pretty decent shape, so we said, you know, get somebody who doesn't have any because we're doing okay. We're getting there. They were, they shouldn't have it by the terms of the contract, the salt mine shouldn't have it delivered to us within three business days after we ordered for anything less than like six hundred ton, we only have six hundred ton wood most any year. And they were running about ten days to two weeks. So knowing that, we were ordering, you know, ahead of time and, and keeping, and doing pretty well with it. So we told them, no, we didn't necessarily need the emergency delivery, like, you know, don't order it. I talked to the salt mine, I asked them what was going on with it, and they said that they kind of likened it to the toilet paper during COVID, where everybody's just stocking it and hoarding it and stocking up.
You can't buy it.
So we got our, we got a delivery on Monday. We got another one yesterday morning that was the ones that we ordered for twenty nine. And then yesterday afternoon, the state shows up with four, three ten wheelers and a tractor trailer with another hundred ton of salt that we didn't really request. It was very nice of them, but then oddly enough, when they got here, that one of the truck drivers asked Jimmy how to get to Mount Morris. They picked up the salt off a barge in Albany in Hudson River, drove it to us, then asked how to get to Mount Morris because they were going down there to load up and take salt from the salt mine that they, everybody thinks doesn't have any salt, to take it to Syracuse. So I have no idea what it's just.
Yeah, we had some people get it from Albany as well. A lot of our vendors were.
But they were here to hear that they're.
It makes zero sense.
Yes.
Zero.
It loads or anywhere around.
But you may see the trucks driving around with some yellow salt on it because that's the Albany salt is yellow for some reason. There's rumors that it comes from overseas somewhere, so I don't even know.
Oh, my gosh.
Then it'd make it all the more better, I guess, if, if we're an hour from a salt mine.
Oh, the yellow is all.
No.
No, that's always a good way. So, no, and just want to thank you guys. This year has been, you know, just brutal. It's not, it's not a ton of snow. We're getting good amount, but it's not, it's just.
But with the ice, the rain, the wind, everything.
It's been inch and hour for three weeks. And they've, they've been plugging right along, you know, sometimes they'll, they go home at four thirty, sometimes they get called back in at seven, do a salt run or this or that, go back home, back up at three thirty to come back in again, so.
These guys are good.
They've been really, you know, plugging around and it's just, it's, it's an around the clock.
But when this is kind of over, isn't there something like you could add about a lunch form or?
No.
Oh, you, then I'll, I'll try.
Maybe we'll have to have a drink. So, yeah, but no, if you just.
God appreciates it because they have been so good this year.
Yeah. Yes, it is. It's a tough, it's a tough thing that your, it never ends. I think one of the cities were twenty days straight, just, so. And Morgan, this weekend.
Oh, my God.
Do not park on the street. We've been, that's one of the things. We've had more issues this year. I don't know if it's new people moving in or not knowing.
It is.
You know, definitely don't park in two AM to six AM. I understand people move their cars out and clear their driveway and then hopefully move back in.
But I think some of the people that are renting some of the apartments, the owners are telling them.
Yeah, and we, we, we've been trying to look, we made up some, that really hurts the tickets, little letters. And I, we printed them off in orange and we, we don't want to tell anybody or ticket anybody. It's not why we're here. But if we can't get through, we can't get through. So, yeah, make them aware. We put them in their windshield and we've had pretty good success with that. Just let them know. And hopefully we never have to get anybody to tell her or move or anything. Everybody works and plays well together, so.
I wish I'd like when you talk about the spring cleaning up instead.
Yes, I, I can, I will be very happy when we're talking about that. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I would caution anybody listening in the village, mostly the old village where there are sidewalks, that because of the temperatures this morning and the freeze that happened this afternoon, the sidewalks are extremely icy.
Yep.
There is no snow coating on them, and so please be aware of them as you are walking, whether it's walking your dog or just out in the middle of the village. I would mention that the next village board meeting will be a budget workshop on Tuesday next week, February eighteenth, here at six o'clock. There will be another budget workshop following Tuesday, February twenty fifth, here at six o'clock. And we will again see you for our next board meeting on Thursday, February twenty seventh.
I will be absent.
So.
Oh, no.
Twenty fifth and twenty seventh.
Oh. When are you going to meet this week?
I'd be, I enjoy this.
Well. And you will listen in?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, no, you should.
There you go.
Sorry, oh, yes.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. I believe it's.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Call in favor?
Aye.